Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to call this meeting in order of the mayor and order of commissioners for November the 8th, 2016. Will you rise with me for the pledge of allegiance, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I get the roll call, please?
Commissioner Arthur Reith.
Here.
Commissioner Warnock.
Here.
Mayor Marion.
Here.
Commissioner LaShir. Let the record show that all of the commissioners, with the exception of Commissioner LaShir, are present.
Thank you. You bow your heads with me for a brief prayer, please. Father God, I come to you tonight on behalf of our town and behalf of the people of our town. Lord, tonight I pray for our nation with this election coming up this evening, no matter the outcome, Lord, that we do come together as a nation. And that I pray for the people of our nation and the people serving overseas, as well as our law enforcement officers, Lord. Please watch over them and protect them, and please be with us as we leave this evening. Thank you. Amen. All right. Under public presentations is the consideration of Resolution 2016-16. This was a resolution that was introduced at the last town meeting. This is for the utility billing processing, as well as a discount for early payment. Town administrator, do you have that?
Yes, I do. This is a resolution, as I discussed at the last meeting, to try to help with the timely payment of utility bills while also trying to be receptive to the issues that our residents can have from time to time when it comes to paying bills. Let me preface it by saying that I think all of us, at times in our lives, have had periods when paying bills and making ends meet can be difficult. And the town of Rising Sun is running a business like any other business and has a bottom line of expenses that it has to meet. But I think we all share the common idea that we can never lose focus of how the business of running the town affects our community. And I think we always have to be open to the different nuances that pop up. So if you recall, a couple months back, as part of the budget process, we reported how we had large numbers of people who were accounts that were not paying their utility bill in a timely manner. And unlike other communities, the town of Rising Sun had no penalty or late penalty fees associated with that. So essentially, we could have people going three, four, five months, sometimes even a whole year, not really being up to date on their utility payments. And there's two ways of looking at it. One, you could look at it as the property owner is, or the account holder is not paying attention to the bill. Or it can be other reasons. They could have water leaks in their property that caused the rate or the consumption rate to be very high, which spiked their utility bill. And if people are living tight on their budgets, just like the town does, that can create a trickle-down effect for the resident paying the bill. So over the years, there's a couple of things the town has attempted to do to help residents. Number one was initiating a software program that gives us the ability to track when people have leaks. So in real time, we can log into the system, and it will give us an alarm for any property that has water running for more than 24 hours straight. And that enables us to either email the customer, call the customer. We actually go out to people's doors during the day and leave a notice saying, please contact us, we think you have a leak in your property. It will be able to help people keep their consumption rate down. The other thing we've tried to do with residents, as I've said before, is we bill on thousand-gallon minimum charges, unlike other communities that will bill in minimum usages. That could be 4,000 gallons, 5,000, 10,000 gallons, meaning if you, in those instances, if you only use 1,000 gallons of water in those other jurisdictions, you could be paying for 10,000 gallons of water whether you used it or not. So that's another thing that the town did many years ago, was to institute billing based upon the water that you actually use. So that encourages people to conserve their water usage. And despite the fact that our water rates are competitive, and at the next meeting, I plan on bringing a graph out of showing the town's water rates in relation to the other Cecil County communities. Although our rate is aggressive, we actually have many people who pay less than $75, $80, $90 a month in water usage because they're only paying for the water that they use. And they're also conserving water whenever possible. So the next step in the process was to make sure that we try to break this cycle of people not, or some customers not paying the water bill in a timely manner, because that has an impact on the town's financial status in the sense of when you finance things, or when you want to finance things, or when you want to get grant money, those agencies will request to see your financial reports. And like any business, if you have a large amount of non-receivables on your financial sheets, that doesn't make people who want to lend you money, or in some cases, give you grants, feel very warm and fuzzy about all those non-receivables. So the business side of the town is, well, we have to protect everybody's interest and make sure we get this money in a timely manner. But yet, at the same time, we don't want to lose sight of people that struggle to pay their bills at the same time. So back in July, the budget was approved with a 10% penalty fee for any payments that are more than 30 days late. A 10% penalty fee would be charged on that. The other thing we did was go to quarterly shut-offs instead of a monthly shut-off process. And we've had three months now, four months now, to sort of get an idea of how much late penalty fees are being accumulated. But we also still have a large number of people. In this last billing, we had over 121 accounts out of 930 that were more than 30 days late. And in many cases, those were people, because we're not shutting water off on a monthly basis, they're just not paying the monthly bill. So a couple people really got surprised with what happens if you ignore your bills for 90 days, how big the number's going to be. So what we have initiated in this round is a payment plan that would allow people, when they're notified that their water could be shut off, they can enter into a payment plan and pay that off over a three-month period. And we will not charge interest, or penalty fees, or administrative costs while they are in that payment plan mode. The other thing that we did is we, when you look at our receivables, when our bills go out at the first of the month, we have a lot of people who pay very quickly, large numbers of people who pay very quickly. And we would like to promote people paying their water bills in a timely manner. So this resolution aims to create a discount for people who pay their water bills in a timely manner. So we submitted this at the last town meeting, and what you have in front of you is, it has some red language in it, that's the fee schedule. Because if you remember a while back, we initiated the idea of taking everything that's in our codes and charter that talks about a dollar that we are going to charge, or some kind of rate. And we want to get it in a sort of a one-stop-shopping fee schedule. So everything regarding dollars and cents is contained in one document. So in order to create the second document that you have, which is a resolution that talks about what kind of charges are going to be, the resolution makes reference to the charges, but the actual dollar amount is in the fee schedule. That way, in the future, if elected bodies ever want to change dollar amounts, they don't have to go into ordinances and resolutions to do that, they can go into fee schedules to do that. So the fee schedule that you have, I'm sorry, the resolution that you have in front of you, and we're going to bring it down for people to be able to see, it's basically broken down into five major categories here. And the first category we have is discount for early payment. And what that essentially says is that if you pay your utility bill, typically, we get the bill to go out so people receive it around the first of the month. We're setting up a mechanism, if you pay it 10 days before the due date, which is typically the 20th of the month, we will give you, the resolution doesn't say it, but the fee schedule does, a 1% discount on your total bill for paying it 10 days before the due date. The second item has to do with payment plans. And this is when our utility customers run into problems paying their bills. We will allow people to enter into a payment plan over a 90-day period, as long as the first payment they make is 50% of the total amount that is due. And then, again, they could go into a non-interest-accruing payment plan over the next 90 days to catch up on their bill. The other item that we put in here, and the staff, when we looked at it from a staff standpoint, the question was, should this payment plan be a one-time thing? What happens if we have people that are going to take advantage of the payment plan all the time, especially when we've said we're not going to charge interest? We could find ourselves right back where we were before with people letting their bills go. So what we are proposing in this is that you, at the bottom sentence here, utility bill accounts will only be eligible for two payment plans in a 12-month period. So essentially, that hypothetically means that somebody can, in a 12-month period, condense the water payments out into two, three-month payment plans. But bear in mind, they are still responsible for the charges that they incur from month to month. So if somebody owed $300, and they went into a three-month payment plan, they could pay $100 a month the next preceding three months, but they would still be responsible at that same time for whatever new consumption charges they incurred at the same time. And again, we want to compromise here and give people an opportunity to be able to make these payments without getting taken advantage of. The other thing is a shut-off policy. There's never really been anything written on how we were going to do shut-offs, and it has been inconsistent at times. So what we wanted to do was create a shut-off policy, but we need to break the shut-off policy into two categories. And the first category I'm going to call is runaway balance. And what runaway balance is supposed to mean is that if we're not going to shut people's water off until every 90 days, and they have a leak that they didn't pay any attention to, and they get a couple hundred-dollar bill during that time, we don't want to wait till 90 days to be telling them, hey, your bill is really high, because what we'll do is get somebody with a $1,000 bill that's overdue because they ignored it or weren't able to pay it, and we're going to run into a problem of some very high balances. So the runaway balance basically says that the town reserves the right to suspend or terminate any service that's provided if there's an outstanding balance greater than $400 that is 30 days late, or 30 days overdue. Because we don't want 400 to sit for 90 days, and then another 200 on top of that, and another 300 on top of that. And then you have residents in a very distressed situation of trying to come up with large sums of money. So the town can identify those accounts that have a runaway balance for whatever reason. And then the quarterly shut-off, this is basically what we talked about before. On a quarterly basis, the town will shut off water, go through a process every October, January, April, and July, and shut off water for those customers who have an outstanding balance that's more than 30 days old, as long as the outstanding balance is not more than $40. So in other words, we're not looking to shut somebody's water off if they're $20 late. The protection to the town is that if they don't pay it, they're still going to accrue the penalty charges on something. So they're not skating free on that. The shut-off notification process basically will be, if somebody comes up on our system that's owing over $400, it's more than 30 days late, they haven't paid, they haven't come in to get a payment plan, we will give them a notice by mail, giving them five days to come in and pay the balance in four, or make arrangements to be on a payment plan. The other item is if we're in the quarterly shut-off process, any bill that is 20 days late and has not been paid and it's 20 days overdue will receive a notice, sort of a friendly reminder that you're coming up on 30 days past due, and you will be subject to interest penalties or penalty fees attached to your late payment, and the possibility of water being shut off, the utility being shut off. So we're going to start doing that at day 20 in the process. And then the other thing that we have to address is, and bear with me here, people are getting a monthly utility bill, and on it, they're seeing that they owe something, and they're given a date in which to pay it. And for whatever reason, they don't pay it, out of sight, out of mind, think it's not that big a deal. Then we are sending them a shut-off notice, which takes time and costs money. And we're telling them, hey, you still haven't paid, you're coming up on 30 days, and we're going to shut your water off. And then, when we finally go shut the water off, and people pay attention, and you're talking about folks who don't call to say, I have a problem, I lost my job, I had a medical issue, or can I do a payment plan, then they call, I said, 5:30, 6 o'clock at night, and they plead grovel to get their water turned back on. Well, in order for us to have that water turned back on, we're paying four hours of call-in time for public works employees to go in and turn that water on. And so now you have an issue of who needs to pay that overtime rate? Everybody else who paid their bill in a timely manner, or the person who, for whatever reason, going through the process, got themselves in a situation because of lack of communication with the town, now has to have the water turned on after hours. So we're trying to be, you know, fair about those costs. Let me also say this, this really is, I'm not going to say it's cutting-edge, but you'd be hard-pressed to find at least any communities around us that, one, are offering payment plans, two, are offering forgiveness on penalty fees associated with late, and then actually even agreeing to turn the water on back on after hours, when we've been reviewing it, most communities say, you call at night, nobody's picking up the phone, whatever, and we're not coming out until the next morning to turn the water back on. So we're trying to provide sort of an a la carte menu for people to navigate through this, but what's fair is fair. We can't have other people paying those costs. The last thing that I wanted to cover is a question that has been raised about if our finances are so tight, why would we be giving incentives for people to pay early? And it's like I said at the last meeting, making the statement that our finances are very tight all the way across the board is not really an accurate statement. Because of the way we keep an eye on all our departments, and we've talked about this, the police department has revenue coming in and expenses going out, planning and zoning does public works, some of the departments, by their nature, struggle at times to break even, other departments do very well. And as you've seen Ms. Wagner report, generally overall, our finances are in good shape. We just try to be very mindful of individual departments to make sure that they are stabilized. So in this case, we, number one, the staff is recommending an incentive for early payment, number one, because that helps the town's cash flow, that helps our financial position. And so we've always believed that this is a partnership between the town and residents to get through this process. So as a good partner, we want to extend an incentive to people for paying early. The money that comes from that, quite frankly, comes on the people that are neglectful of paying it. And so the idea is, the penalty fee that we collect, because we're not trying to make extra money because people don't pay, we're trying to motivate people to pay and be responsive of the bills due. And instead of the town just simply taking that money, we are using that as a trade-off to give to people who pay, as a discount to give to people who pay early. So the whole process is sort of an in-and-out, give-and-take process to try to make the overall system better. So there's your resolution.
Thank you, town administrator.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a question? Calvin, a question on the percentage discount. For residents who come and pay early, but say drop their bill off in the mail slot out front, not there in person, how will that 1% be credited to them?
What we have in the resolution is that we want the payment in the box by the close of business here. That way, we can properly account it. Because again, it comes down to what's fair is fair. If the bill is due on Friday, and we come in Monday morning, did the person pay the bill on time, or did they drop it in the mailbox Monday morning?
What I mean is, say if I come in in person, I get my bill on the first of the month, I come in three or four days later, and I pay the bill, is that percentage of discount going to be taken off right then? So if, say the bill was $55, will it be, the 1% be discounted right then?
Yes.
So they won't pay 55. What I'm getting at is, the person who comes in, the bill comes out on the first, they stop by here on the third, like me, I leave very early and don't always get back before town hall opens or closes, so I'll drop it in the slot. So my 1%, or anybody's 1%, is using me as an example. How will that 1% come back to me? Will it be on the next month's bill? I mean, for residents who will do it that way, how will that happen?
We are working with the system to print a bill that will show the line item of what a 1% discount will represent. So you could make your check out to that 1% with that 1% discount on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I would like to move forward. Would anyone like to make a motion to approve Resolution 2016-16?
Do we need to read the whole thing in again?
No.
As the attorney said, we gave a synopsis of what it is.
Well, I'll make a motion, we approve Resolution 2016-16.
Second? There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, gentlemen. And thank you, town administrator, for that review of the resolution. I know that we have had a couple of complaints about us being too brief, and people wanting to know exactly what and the reasons why. So thank you for that. All right. Citizens' input. Mr. Fisher?
The town advertises that it's very transparent, yet I've pointed out errors in the reasoning for the justification for the Chester Water Authority, and I haven't heard any refutation of my pointing out the errors. So what's going on? Do we make our decisions on the basis of facts, or what somebody wants to put down? Got any comment?
No, sir, this is just a statement portion. This is just a citizen's input, sir. It's not a question and answer, so.
But when do you answer questions?
If you have questions, sir, you can definitely ask after the board, or you can send us an email.
You just ask the question.
Well, you can ask us after the meeting, sir. This is just for input. This is for citizens' input. Thank you. Mr. Johnson?
It's been a long time since I've been up here. The last time I came up here, we bought that property.
A little bit different now, right?
Yeah, it's been a long time. This is, I guess, more of a question that I have. We bought that 15 and a half acres behind the trailer park, which is basically wet land, there's new structures on it. We had, we got the debt reduction bill on our taxes, and I just wanted to know, what are the parameters? I read the town, you know, the little paper that we got, and I just, I don't know whether we're, you know, is that paying us or not?
I would tell you, Mr. Johnson.
Can I just get the parcel ID from you?
I'm sorry.
At the end of the meeting, if we could get the parcel ID, because we're currently in.
We'll look into it for you.
Okay. That's all you had to do, is that?
Absolutely. We'll get back to you with that.
Great.
Thank you.
Yeah, we've already established at least part of a list. I think we were still reviewing to make sure we had finalized a list, but I know there was some parcels in that area that we had identified.
And we can certainly get with you after the meeting, for sure.
Actually, I was hoping you guys would buy that. It's great for the town.
Does the pond come with it?
Yeah.
There we go.
It's a beautiful pond.
All right. Would anyone else like to speak this evening? All right. Hearing none, we'll move forward. Town administrator, do you have a report this evening?
No.
Thank you. Chief?
No.
Thank you. All right. Historical preservation commission, no report? All right. Any old business?
I have something under old business, Mr. Mayor. What I'd like to talk about, we, a few months back, proposed a property maintenance and a rental inspection and resale ordinances. We read those into the minutes. We got a lot of feedback on both programs, both the rental inspection, the resale, and the property maintenance. One of the things that we did decide not to go with was the resale inspections. But I do want us to revisit the ordinance 2016-05, which was the rental inspection program. That was a good program, and I think we need to take a lot of the comments, Calvin, that we got from people, make some adjustments during our workshops over the next couple of months. And I would like for us to revisit that, because the problem still exists for a lot of residents and a lot of property owners. The rental inspection needs to come back around and go forward. But we did get a lot of good comments about that, that we can make some adjustments to that on. So we read it in, but then due to lack of some meetings, it went past the 60 days. But it was kind of good, because we did get some good information about that, to make some adjustments to that, so that it's more fair. So I'd like for that not to be considered a dead issue, because the problem didn't go away. So I want that to be revisited and brought back up, probably by January, I think, after the holidays, we can have time to reevaluate that. That's all.
Thank you, Commissioner Arthur Reith. My report is very brief tonight. I wanted to remind everyone, it is 7 o'clock, you still have an hour to go vote, if you haven't already. Do your civic duty and get out and vote. I know the line was pretty long this morning when I went, and this afternoon as well. So a lot of people have gotten out and voted. There's a few things that I wanted to go over. One was, we had an amazing turnout for our rain date of our Fall Spooktacular. I was amazed at the amount of people that came out. I would probably say, just by an estimate from me, it was probably close to 1,000 or more people that came out for the event. I do want to thank all of our business sponsors. The business community really stepped up and helped provide donations to be able to pay for a lot of the things with this event. And also, a big thank you to our board as well, because the town also puts in money as well to pay for our Fall Spooktacular. But the turnout was great, people seemed to really enjoy themselves, and we're excited for next year's Fall Spooktacular as well. Myself and Commissioner Warnock, as well as Chief Peterson, attended a school resource meeting. We're continuing to have strong bonds with our schools and listening to their needs, whether it is a public safety issue, or whether it is just an issue that they want us to be involved in. So we're excited to continue those school resource meetings that we're going to have. And that's my time. No, I'm just kidding. I timed myself. But the other thing I wanted to say was a big thank you to our town administrator. We recently got this award for our staff. It's an award for excellence, for safety, and claims management. This was presented by our insurance company. This was presented by our insurance company, Chesapeake Insurance, Chesapeake Employers Insurance. And a big shout-out to all our employees, because they're the ones that really deserve the credit for this award. But there are many things that the board is, we all have full-time jobs, and sometimes we're not able to make events. And I wanted to say a special thank you to our Town Administrator for being able to go to that event and be able to represent the town, because the board was, unfortunately, we were all at our daytime jobs. As well as a big thank you to him for attending a special event, and I'm sure he'll discuss this at our next town meeting, because I told him to keep it short tonight, about our water and sewer, our sewer plant getting an award for construction. He also attended that as well. So that was great. But that concludes my report. Commissioner Othonreath?
No other comments, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Commissioner Warnock?
You have a gavel, so I'm not going to, I don't want to get beaten with it. So I'll get to election results.
Yes, absolutely.
Reserve my comments for tonight.
All right, thank you. Is there any more business coming for the board this evening? Hearing none, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Can we, real quick, go over, one thing, didn't we, the next town meeting on November 22nd, did we talk about possibly canceling that one due to the week of Thanksgiving, as well as the one, I think, a couple days before Christmas?
No, we had not spoken about that yet. What is your opinion?
I think with things we got going on, can we wait a little closer to Thanksgiving to decide whether or not we're going to cancel that meeting or not?
Yep, absolutely. Could I get a motion to adjourn?
Planning meetings, should we mention that, Calvin, since nobody?
I'm really rushing this along. Our planning commission meeting's November the 21st, and that's going to be at 6:30. We have some of our planning commission meeting members here, so thank you so much for that. As well as on Veterans Day, our town hall will be closed, which is November the 11th, this Friday. So I don't think there's any more business. I make a motion, we adjourn?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Thank you, gentlemen, and enjoy your election results tonight.